I call this town meeting to order. I'm Joanne Berry, Town Moderator. So first, I want everyone to just appreciate that we all came together. There's something like 1,350 people in the building. There's only a few in line right now, so we are going to get started. And this is... You are the government, just keep that in mind. You are the government. You are the legislature. You are coming together tonight to vote yea or nay on the items before us. And I just want people to appreciate... I'm happy that people took heart coming in a little bit early compared to what usual... What you might have if this wasn't going to be such a big crowd and that we can conduct our business and come back again tomorrow, but do it fairly inefficiently. So, thank you to all of you for attending tonight and to help us decide important items in the life of our town. Thanks to the town and school staff for taking care of all the arrangements, including the parking and shuttles and the setup for this meeting, which have been far and above what is the normal for this town meeting. Thanks to Bill Mullen, Pat Clifford, and Walter Foster for serving as deputy moderators in the extra spaces. I know many of you are first-time attenders. Welcome. Town meeting can be unwieldy, so I will do my best to explain what is happening as we go along. Even if this is not your favorite thing, thank you for joining your fellow Actonians in this practice of democracy. Every item on this agenda is something that people care about. Town meeting is the opportunity to speak and listen, though not without boundaries, and then to consider the options and vote. I will remind you, please do not boo or applaud or cheer when individuals speak, even though it could be exciting. This is not a sporting event, even though democracy is not a spectator sport. This is government. Or when an article passes or fails. Let's try to stay polite. The items before you represent hundreds of volunteer and staff... Hundreds of hours of volunteer and staff effort over the past year or years. The appointed and elected town committees and boards are volunteers despite the princely sums that we get right here. Many boards and committees are looking for members and all welcome input from interested residents. See the back of the warrant or the town website for more information on how to join a committee or board that matches your interests and skills. Tonight, the town executive branch, the Select Board, is bringing its agenda to you. The Legislative Branch for Approval. Each article has been the subject of public meetings, presentations, and discussions over the past year with adjustments made along the way based on your input through email and participation in person via Zoom, in-person or via Zoom at board and committee meetings. Presentations on many articles have been available on Acton TV for more than a week for your review. A huge thanks to Acton TV for facilitating and to the presenters for using this method to help voters learn about the articles. We will conduct the town's business by discussing ideas, not people. I hope you can assume we are all here with good intent and can disagree without being disagreeable. We are neighbors before and after this meeting, and I encourage you to speak with kindness and respect. We will have two sessions to complete the warrant or agenda. Tonight, we'll cover Article One, the Consent Agenda, which I'll explain when we get to that part, and Articles Four through Eight, the Town Operating and Capital Budgets, the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment, the Minuteman Regional School District Assessment. The election of trustees for the West Acton Citizens Library will follow Article Eight. Tomorrow, we'll begin with Article Nine, CPA Funding, and finish. Your willingness to be concise and not repeat what others have said will be much appreciated. We do have auto-generated text on screens down there. It is the auto... I don't know if it's better than YouTube or what, but it is auto-generated, so hopefully that is helpful. If you are not able to stand or approach the microphone, there's a handheld mic somewhere in each area. Okay, right in the mid here. So if somebody wants to speak and can't stand at the microphone, either if she doesn't come to... If the mic handler doesn't come to you, wave your hand and I'll try to direct them your way. We will use pro and con mics, and we'll rotate between the locations. I think we're in two? Yeah, we're just here and in the big gym. There will be some articles where we'll take questions only first before pro-con discussion, but I will let you know when that happens. Please note that the motion we discuss... I will read the motions. I read what is required of me to read, and I know some people aren't fans of that, but that's what I'm required to do. And then we discuss, and the motions are a handout, a three-page handout that you may have picked up on the way in. They're substantially the same as what's in the warrant, but there may be some slight So then, when you do wish to speak, I will recognize you, and I'll rotate between the microphones, and we'll go back and forth between the gym and here. So please state your name and street before making your comment or asking you a question. If you do refer to something from a previous speaker, please just say "a previous speaker said" or "an earlier speaker said." Keep in mind that you are officially speaking to me, the moderator, though your comments and questions are for the benefit of everyone. This is designed to keep the temperature down and keep the meeting flowing smoothly or moderated. If you have questions, I will recognize the person most appropriate to answer. This isn't a discussion between members in the legislature. That's just not the way it works. You will have two minutes to speak, not including the response to your question. And there are timers, which should be visible to everyone. I will accept a motion to cut off debate or to move the previous question once there has been sufficient debate to inform the town meeting members of the pros and cons of the motion. Moving the previous question requires a second, is non-debatable, and requires two-thirds majority to pass. In the absence of a motion to move the previous question, following a robust discussion, the moderator may determine, usually through a show of hands, that most of the voters have decided how to vote, and the vote will be taken at that time. We will use the clickers, which everyone should have, on most votes. When it's time, the instructions will be shown on the screen, so please don't turn on the clicker until that time, until instructed. If your clicker is not working, please raise your hand so the tellers can reach you with a replacement. We will have one speaker... This is Kristi's cue. She is a town resident. But we will have at least one speaker who is not a resident of Acton who will present or answer questions related to the articles. At this time, I would ask for your consent to hear from non-residents. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Finally, I do want to let you know the van... Anyone who is using the van for rides, the last... If we're still here, the last round will leave at 11:00 PM, and I'll try to remind you. Hopefully, we'll be done, but... So if we're still here and you need a ride, that is where you get it. All right. I would like at this time for Mr. Snyder Grant to introduce the folks on the side of the stage.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
I think you have to get a little closer, Jim.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, shortly, we will have John Mangiari, Town Manager, to your left. Next to him is Tom Beijen, the Assistant Town Manager. Next to him is Mina Macarios from Town Council's office. Next to him is Leo Mercado, our Deputy Town Clerk, and Eva Skorodick, our Town Clerk. In the front row here, we have the Select Board. We have David Martin, Alyssa Nickel, Dean Charter, Francesca Amroth, and Jim Snyder Grant.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, please introduce the Finance Committee.
Hi, my name is Kristi Anderson. See if I can avoid it doing that. Okay. We have Jason Cole, who is Vice Chair, Christine Russell, Steve Noon, Greg Jarboe, Scott Sullivan, Roland Borden, and hiding in the back row, we have Adam Noldy and Dave Wellinghoff. With a large committee, it's hard to get us all.
Could I... I just want to take a quick minute. I do appoint the Finance Committee, and if anyone is interested, always looking for people. The Finance Committee represents you, the voters, and taxpayers in the town's financial matters. The committee includes members with diverse thinking and positions on financial matters and town finance. While their work is not always recognized, they make a difference using facts and research to collaborate with the other boards with the taxpayers' interests in mind. And with that, the point of view.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening. As I said, I'm Kristi Anderson, and my funder was just stolen, because I was going to tell you what the Finance Committee does. As Joanne said, we are a group of appointed people. We are not politicians, and we are not appointed by either the Select Board or the School Committee, so we can judge their expenses without any fear of repercussions against us. I'm hoping that this all will be taken into consideration by those of you who have come here tonight to vote against the budgets, because we, the Finance Committee, believe that these budgets are in our community's best financial interests. However, we also believe that costs need to be examined further so that we can avoid getting here again anytime soon, and we believe that there is the possibility that there is savings that can be made in this budget, just not in the timeframe that we have right now. Sorry about that. I'm new to this clicker. Overrides are inevitable in our town. With the services that we provide, our small commercial base, and our low rate of building new houses, expenses grow faster than our revenues. The state will only let the town raise taxes by two and a half percent from the previous year's cap, plus a factor for growth. The town of Acton now works out to about three percent annually. Unfortunately, our largest fixed costs have been growing faster than eight percent a year lately. You can see the problem. This fall, we had a sudden spike in health insurance costs that pushed these fixed costs higher than the allowed increase. That's where this negative number comes. Then things got worse. Mandated expenses also took a big leap. These are services that the school district is required to provide for special needs students who moved into the district later than initial planning. Again, these are also uncontrollable. Add in inflation and contracted cost increases, and paying for the remainder of the budget would lead to a $9.5 million shortfall. That gap is too large to cause the close through the normal budgeting process. And $9.5 million is too large of a tax increase right now, so the town and the school district made cuts. Respecting that this is a democracy, elected officials could only make changes that didn't require much public input. They couldn't get rid of any large programs or make structural changes without broader discussions that would take longer than the time available. As I said, the problems appeared in the fall. So, staff has been cut to the minimum healthy level. Capital investments have been limited to the most immediate safety needs, and fees have gone up. Additionally, reserves have been spent down to the lowest safe level to pay for as much of the tax increase as possible. Our town will still be in very good, healthy financial situation, but we wanted to let you know that there are not... Isn't further way to help in that. Any district hiring that you might have heard of has been for that mandate. Other cuts have been made, but I've heard people say that this district has still been hiring people when they're asking for this increase. That is not actually the case. Also, any improvements you see around town were paid for in previous budgets, were done by the state, or from grants or gifts. For example, the new garden in front of Town Hall is not the town spending money frivolously while asking for more from you. It was, in fact, a gift from the Acton Garden Club in celebration of their 50th anniversary. An override was on the horizon. In order to hold those cuts off, the town and the school district have been making... In order to hold the override off, the town and the school district have been making cuts over the last two years. Some of these have been immediately visible, such as the removal of classroom assistance, and others have been less noticeable, such as delays in capital investments and cuts in back office staff. Remaining cost-cutting options at this point will take a medium-to-long-term timeframe to implement. Any changes of that scale need to be made with public input. Elected officials should not and do not want to decide these things on their own. To that end, a cost-cutting task force should be formed to determine where savings can be found and whether those savings line up with our community's priorities. Ideally, this would have been done before these budgets were made, but the sudden increases in the fall made that impossible. If you don't like where we are, please become informed and tell your elected officials what you want. This can be done at any time that fits in your schedule, the minimum of work. You don't need to be at the meetings to talk to your Select Board and School Committee. Email them. Here's a timeline of the budgeting process so that you can decide when to tune in. Your feedback can make change anywhere in there. You can stay informed without attending or watching whole meetings. The Select Board and School Committee meet twice a month. Read the agendas posted on their websites and scan for the words "budget" to find which sections to watch. Go to Acton TV or YouTube to watch the meeting and fast-forward to only the part you care about, then email questions or comments. If the Select Board and School Committee are not hearing from you, they can't take your view into account. In summary, with fixed costs growing faster than revenues, we were going to need an override soon. Sudden large expenses in the fall moved that up to this year. The scale of these expenses would require an infusibly large tax increase, so additional service cuts have been made. Finally, reserves have been spent to decrease the taxes further. There are probably elements of these budgets that you don't agree with, things that you think shouldn't be spent on. Tell the Select Board and School Committee so that those changes can be considered and future budget increases can be kept to a minimum. Voting these budgets down will send a message, but at too high of a cost. That message has already been sent with an extremely narrow margin in the override vote. Take that and demand change going forward rather than throwing things into disarray. The Finance Committee believes that passage of these town and school budgets is 100% in the best financial interests of our community. Forming of a cost-cutting task force is a necessary next step. Thank you very much for listening and considering this point of view.
Thank you. That moves us to Article One, Choose Town Officers. I will read the motion. Mr. Snyder Grant moves that the town fix the compensation for elected officers as shown in the article. Mr. Snyder Grant nominates William Mullen of Wilson Lane for the position of temporary moderator, term to expire 2025. Michael Gowing, trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, nominates Leo Faulkman of 18 Wright Terrace, Acton, for the position of trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, term to expire 2025. Michael Gowing, trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, nominates Lauren E. Richard of 2220 Ellington Street, Acton, for the position of trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, term to expire 2027. Thomas Matthews, trustee of the Acton Firefighters Relief Fund, nominates Brent Carter of Seven Dogwood Drive, Townsend, for the position of trustee of the Acton Firefighters Relief Fund, term to expire 2027. Do I hear a second? Is there any discussion? Perfect. This requires a two-thirds, I believe? Nope, majority. Requires majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Mullen, the vote in the gym? Wait, can I hear him back? Is there a vote in the gym?
It's narrowly unanimous.
Thank you. Same in here. Motion does pass. We will now move to Article Three, Budget Transfer. We will take up the Consent Agenda at the end. Article Three, Budget Transfer. Mr. Snyder Grant moves that the town transfer and appropriate $221,800 from free cash to supplement the amount appropriated for the municipal operating budget at the 2023 annual town meeting for the purpose of defraying necessary expenses incurred in fiscal year 2024 for health insurance claims. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, Mr. Snyder Grant.
This is an article about this current fiscal year. It's not about next year's budget. As you may know, the Health Insurance Trust, the current way that we fund the health insurance for town employees and school employees, has been having serious cost overruns to the point where we are moving away from the Health Insurance Trust in the upcoming year. But in the meantime, we need to continue to, you know, pay the health insurance claims for people that are in that plan. The Health Insurance Trust trustees and the Finance Committee have been carefully watching and recently understood that it would be necessary and prudent to transfer money for this fiscal year, the one that ends July 1st, in order to make sure that we can cover all those claims.
Does this majority... It doesn't say. Okay. Are there any comments from the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends the article.
Any comments from town meeting members? Seeing none here, are there any in the other room? Mr. Mullen?
No, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. This requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay. Unanimous here. And in the gym?
The lower gym is unanimous.
And the upper gym?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Just so folks know, we now have people in the auditorium, the upper gym, and the lower gym, at something over 2,000 voters present. Okay, pass. That brings us to the Town Operating Budget. The motion on this is a little unorthodox compared to what we usually have. There are two parts to the motion, the large amount, and then there's a smaller amount to be taken from another source. So I will read that. Okay. So, the... Okay, are we going... Are we zigging and zagging here? Okay, so there are two parts. The larger part, which both... This requires a majority vote. Mr. Martin moves that the town appropriate $38,693,663 to be expended by the town manager to fund the fiscal year 2025 municipal budget and to raise such amount, $38,643,663 to be raised from general revenues and $50,000 to be transferred from cemetery trust funds for cemetery use, and that the town authorize the town manager to lease on such terms and conditions as he may determine vehicles and equipment for a period not to exceed five years, and to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of vehicles and equipment being replaced and to expend any proceeds so received. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. So it's been moved and seconded in Part One. Now Part Two, which I should have read first. Motion requires two-thirds vote. Mr. Martin moves that the town transfer from the other post-employment benefits trust fund and appropriate $300,000 to be expended by the town manager for the payment of retiree health insurance costs. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we will... Mr. Martin will speak to the motions. We will vote them separately and discuss them separately as needed. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out to town meeting. I'm David Martin. I'm here to present the town's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2025, which begins These are the groups that do the work in the town's budget process. Each has a role, but we all work together to come up with the proposals for tonight. First and foremost, the town manager produces the budget details, of course, working with staff, like department heads and the finance staff. The budget details are produced based on Select Board priorities. This year, he produced something like nine variants of the budget as we worked through issues. ALG is composed of representatives from the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, plus associated staff. ALG proposes how to apportion revenue between the town and the school district. FinCom reviews departmental budgets and capital plans in detail and brings their recommendations to town meeting. And finally, the Select Board brings the warrant articles forward to town meeting to consider for appropriation. After preparing budgets last year, town leaders knew that the financial challenges were becoming more difficult. Many thought we would need an override next year for fiscal year 2026. After unexpected expenses came to light, however, it became clear that we needed to consider an override this year for fiscal year 2025, which begins in July. To create a point of reference, last fall, the Select Board and the School Committee asked the town manager and school superintendent to create level services budgets, that is, what the budget would be if we provided the same services next year that we do this year. After review, all parties thought that the level services budgets were too high, so the Select Board asked the town manager to produce a budget that was $1 million less than level services, and the School Committee asked for a budget that was $2 million less. Those became the recommended budgets. After budget reviews, the Finance Committee asked for further reductions to the recommended budgets. The town's recommended budgets, along with those reductions, are covered in this presentation for town meeting to consider. There are two general areas driving the budget increases in town. Structural budget drivers are those costs that consistently increase more than is allowed under Proposition Two and a Half. Since we must pay these, they further squeeze other parts of the budget each year. Health insurance was originally up 22.8%, which caused us to switch to Maya as a provider, but even so, health insurance is up 13.8%. Pension payments to middlesex retirement are up about 4.7%. Minuteman Tech, which is... Will be covered in Article Eight, is a consistent budget driver, up 9.6% this year. In general, the town is very project-focused. We have many concurrent projects in many different areas. These are the biggest areas. Our facilities are well-maintained, but we have HVAC systems that are decades old, roofs that are decades old, plumbing that is many decades old. Many millions of dollars of work will be needed in upcoming years. There are portions of our road system that need improvement for safety. Sidewalks are popular with residents, but it's difficult to fund progress on them. The town commissioned a study that shows that we need nearly $10 million in stormwater infrastructure in the next decade, over $800,000 a year. We want to avoid washed-out roads as a result of superstorms. This is the proposed town budget as a glance for next year. The three big departments are the police, fire, and public works. The finance department is large because it covers insurance for all departments, plus the town's debt service. I'll leave it up here just for a minute for people to take a look. The town's total proposed fiscal year 2025 operating budget and capital budget is $40,772,801. The operating budget covered by this article is $38,993,663, an increase of 4.3% over the current year. All but $300,000 of that is covered by the main motion, which requires a majority vote. OPEB, on the second line down, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. That trust is where we set aside money to pay retirees. This year, we're proposing to use $300,000 from OPEB to pay a portion of retiree benefits. That part requires a two-thirds vote. The Select Board recommends Article Four. Thank you. Thank you.
Finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends Article 4.
Before we begin discussion on this, I have been alerted, first of all, that we now have folks in the cafeteria, which is the fourth space, and for the people who are in the cafeteria, which I assume you can hear me, if you have a clicker, you should return to one of the gyms or the auditorium, or turn in your clicker, because there's no receiver there, and your vote will not be counted. There will be hand counting in the cafeteria. There's no receiver there, so either return, go to one of the gyms, or there's some space here in the auditorium, a few seats, or turn in your clicker and be prepared to vote by hand. Okay. Let me just get an idea of how many people have questions. None? None here. How about in the other rooms?
None in the lower gym.
All right. Any in the upper gym? Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
A few questions, or some questions?
One question so far.
Okay, so let's hear the question, please.
Peter Berry from Faulkner Hill Road. The town, for many years, has been very concerned about future unfunded liability for health insurance for retirees. We've been putting, in my experience, about $625,000 a year in the OPEB account. What's the impact of, first of all, is there any money contributed to that account this year in this budget? And second of all, what's the future impact on unfunded liabilities of withdrawing money from that account?
Mr. Martin?
Thank you for that question. The, we are still contributing about $600,000 this year to OPEB, even though we're using $300,000. And the fact that we're beginning to use this, if we continue to use this in this manner in future years, it will extend the fully funded, the year in which we fully fund OPEB out a few years, from the mid-2030s to the late 2030s. I'm not sure of the exact dates, but it does extend it out a few years, but we're still making progress in funding that trust.
All right. It is time to hear from the town meeting members. We have pro and con microphones in the auditorium. They may be designated in the other spaces.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
We had one more question here in the upper gym.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear the question.
Hi, I'm Corinne Hogseth from Seminole Road. Looking at the ALG spreadsheet, it looks like you're taking $1 million more than you usually do out of free cash to support this budget. The difference between the A and the B budgets was $833,000. So it looks like the entire difference between the A and the B budgets is being funded out of free cash. Is that an accurate assessment or interpretation?
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
No, that's not accurate. So the differences between the A and the B budgets, so the B budget, just so everybody knows, was the budget we would have used had the override not passed, so it's not really a thing anymore. It was about $800,000 than the motion for this article, so it was less. There were, long, as to free cash, there were a number of discussions about how much free cash to use and whether we should use it to lessen the impact of the increases this year. So the decision proposed by ALG was to use a little bit more of free cash this year and kind of pay it back next year, just to kind of lessen the impact of the tax increases this year. By the way, that free cash money gets used in the next article for capital items.
Additional questions from any of the other rooms?
Nobody's standing, Madam Moderator?
No one in the lower gym.
All right. Let us hear from the town meeting members, pro and con, if anyone has anything. I see no one in the auditorium.
There's nobody standing here, Madam Moderator.
No one's standing in the lower gym.
All right, we have two votes that we must take on this article. And we will do them by clicker, so if the tech team could put the clicker instructions up. The first part is we will vote. "Mr. Martin moves that the town transfer from other post-employment benefits trust fund and appropriate $300,000 to be expended by the town manager for the payment of retiree health costs." This requires a two-thirds majority. So as soon as you see the instructions on the screen, which will take a second, and the fourth, the cafeteria space, we'll be voting by hand, and the tellers are in there, I imagine, taking that in hand. So Mr. Foster, you should go ahead and get that vote going in the cafeteria. Okay, so...
Madam Moderator, we have a point of order in the lower gym. They cannot read the screens. We have three of them at the front of the room, but they're not supersized, and we're needing some extra time.
Okay. We will take that into consideration. So, you should have your clicker at the ready. And there should not be any moving between in and out during the voting, please.
Moderator, could you confirm that you're going to read the instructions?
Yeah, yes. We're still, we're still on the first screen of take out your clicker and have it ready, but don't do anything yet. Okay. Now, you may turn on your clicker using the orange power button. And if anybody's, does not turn on, please, it should, it should have a one in the middle of the screen? Or say ready? It should light up, you should know. And then you press the blue button to sync it up, which, I'm not sure what happens then. Think we, okay, there we go. Okay, it should still look the same, but we're getting people settled on clickers here. Okay. If anybody still needs a clicker, there's in the very back section, okay, I think somebody's going up there.
Madam Moderator, in the, at the upper gym, we're still working on a couple of clickers.
First time I synced to mine, there was a circle with an X, you know, like the Ghostbuster thing, suggesting I was not synced, but if anybody...
We appear to be okay in the lower gym for clickers.
If anybody has that circle with the line, they should hit it again.
Okay, if you didn't sync the first time, just click the button again, the blue one. Okay. So, please, oh, wait, a couple more over here. Tech support still happening? Are there enough clickers for them? I have just heard, for people who are in the cafeteria, there is space in the upper large gym, so you could have a clicker in there. There's enough clickers still. So if you could go there, that would expedite the voting quite a bit. Okay, there might be some squishing in the bleachers. But it will, it will really save a bunch of time. I'm not sure how long that will take for folks to travel to the other spots, so... I have no jokes. But I do want to give them a chance to get over there and do this vote, because that is what you came for.
Madam Moderator, could you read the, the instructions, because, okay, no, that's fine, we just got rid of the text at the bottom, so...
Oh, okay.
That was covering up some of the spots. So can you reread the instructions?
Sure. Is it, should we wait for everyone to get to the other room before we vote, or? No preference? Okay.
No.
Oh, my preference, well, I think it would be better if we all voted at the same time, just, you know. It'll just be easier to manage if, if, Ms. Clifford, if you could let me know, oh, no, I guess the people are going to the large gym, so let me know when that is checked.
Madam Moderator, the door is closed here for the lower gym. Everybody who's going to vote is in.
So we are, we will, once the folks get into the large gym, we'll restart. Which this is far better than the days of hand counting that sometimes took 45 minutes per vote, just in case anybody forgot that episode in our town meeting life. And then we had two or three in a row, so we got clickers.
Madam Moderator, we're closed in the upper gym right now.
Okay, so you are, have the people come from the cafeteria in there?
Yes.
Okay, so we're all set? For voting then? People have their clickers? Is that true, Mr. Mullen? Yes?
Yes, we're all set in the upper gym.
All set in the lower gym.
All right, if we could go back to the motion first, just to make sure the people who were in transit get all the information. So first, we are voting on the 300,000, I'll just read that again. "Mr. Martin moves that the town transfer from the other post-employment benefits trust fund and appropriate $300,000 to be expended by the town manager for the payment of retiree health insurance costs." That's what we're voting on right now, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So if we could have the clicker, so if you have not yet turned on your clicker, use the orange button to turn on the clicker, then use the blue button to sync, and if you get the circle and a slash, just hit the blue button again, that should work. And then, if you are voting yes or aye, choose the A button. If you are abstaining, click the C button, and if you are voting nay or no, press the E button. Is there anyone in this room who was unable to vote? Okay, everyone set in the auditorium? Is everyone, how is it going in the other rooms?
People are...
We're all set.
Okay, voting is closed. It'll take a minute for the results. And you may turn off, press the orange button to turn off your clicker now. While we're waiting for the result of this, could please, the non-voters who are in either of the gyms, please return to the cafeteria? Non-voters, please go to the cafeteria. Sorry to get you all excited. Before we take the next vote, which will be in a minute, I think. No pressure. No pressure. The vote clearly passes by the two-thirds margin required. Eighty-seven percent to thirteen percent.
Eighteen eighty.
Oh, all right. The vote clearly passes by the two-thirds required. Okay, so a couple of things. So if the non-voters, make sure you are not in either of the gyms, please go to the cafeteria. Just so that we all know, there are 2,385 voters checked in. I'm not sure if that's a record, but it's gotta be close. So the next thing is the main part of the municipal budget on Article Four. This is, "The town appropriate $38,693,663 to be expended by the town manager to fund the fiscal year 2025 municipal budget and to raise such amount, $38,643,663, be raised from general revenues and $50,000 be transferred from cemetery trust funds for cemetery use." That is the, what we are voting on now. This requires a majority... Oh, sorry. "...that the town authorize the town manager to lease on such terms and conditions as he may determine vehicles and equipment for a period not to exceed five years and to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of vehicles and equipment being replaced and to expend any proceeds so received." We are now ready to vote. If we could have the clicker instructions again. Hopefully this time we'll, you know, be a little quicker. Okay, you may turn on your clicker with the orange button and sync it up with the blue button. And if you get the circle with the slash, just click again. Okay, is everyone's clicker working all right? Okay. Now, if you are voting yes or I, press A.
Madam Moderator...
Yes.
We are not prepared in the lower gym.
Okay.
We have a number of people who are having issues syncing.
Okay, we'll pause for just a moment, then.
Madam Moderator, thank you for your patience. We are set in the lower gym.
Mr. Mullen? Mr. Mullen?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Could you check? It has come to my attention there might be some folks in the hall who are trying to get into the gym. Could you allow them entrance if they are in fact out there? Because we're paused on the voting for the moment.
Yes. Yes, I guess so. Madam Moderator, we're all set.
Okay. Okay, so anybody who wants to be in a voting area is in a voting area. I hope. Okay. If you have not yet pressed the orange button, please do that. And then as soon as your clicker turns on, press the blue button. And then you should see, probably it will say, "Ready." Or we'll have that one... Mine's been on for a minute, so... Okay. Are we almost... Okay. If you are voting yes or I, please press A. If you want to abstain, press C. And if you are voting no or nay, please press E.
So just in this room, right?
Madam Moderator, is the voting started?
The voting has started.
So we're giving instructions here. As it clearly says, vote A is for I, C is to abstain, and E is for no.
Correct.
It's been read three times. We're working on that.
Okay. Let me know when it seems like people have finished voting.
Madam Moderator, we can't hear in this room.
Say that again? You can't, oh, geebers.
Am I speaking?
All right.
We cannot hear in this room.
So you can vote when ready and just let me know when you're done. And has everyone in the auditorium, are people set here in the auditorium? It seems so. So, Mr. Mullen, just let us know when, and Ms. Clifford, when people have had the chance to finish voting.
Yes, we cannot hear in this room.
Not sure.
Madam Moderator, we are all set in the lower gym.
So with the difficulty in hearing in the gym, once again, I apologize for our technical difficulties here, but I will, hopefully, we, like I said, appreciate the fact that we are here, we are not standing outside in the rain or the cold or the burning heat or any of those sorts of things. I know I sound like my mother, but... But, and if you haven't met the people who you're sitting near, then here's a chance. I won't, I won't ask you to give the sign of peace or anything like that, but, but this is, this is stretching our resources to manage this number of people. And I do appreciate your patience with this, and hopefully, once we get this solved, we'll be on a roll. But I don't want to, like, close the vote until everyone has had the opportunity to cast their vote.
Madam Moderator, I repeat, we cannot hear you in this room.
Got it.
I'm going to the cafeteria...
Okay.
...to get that part of it speeded up.
Yeah, Mullen, I'm just gonna call Bill and tell him I know. Hi there. I know you can't hear me. I heard that a bunch. But Matt, yeah, Matt should be on his way over there to see what's what. Um, yeah, because, yeah. Okay, all right. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent. Okay. So if you have not yet voted, please vote. Are there people in the gym who are still voting?
Has everybody voted in here? People have voted here, Madam Moderator.
All right, voting is now closed. And you may turn off your clicker. Article Two, Town Operating Budget, passes clearly by a seventy-eight percent to twenty-two percent margin. Thank you. That moves us right along to the next article, Town Capital, Public Works, Public Safety, and Public Celebrations. "Mr. Martin moves that the town transfer from free cash and appropriate $1,025,000 for the purposes set forth in the article, including costs incidental and relative thereto." Do I hear a second? This requires a majority to pass. Mr. Martin, to your article.
Hello, I'm here again, this time to present the town's proposed capital budget for fiscal year 2025, which begins on July 1st. Article Five covers medium-sized, one-time expenses, mostly capital items from, and this year funded entirely from free cash. Free cash is the portion of the town's funds that serve as a reserve and a buffer from year to year. Mostly, it's accumulated from when the town manager underspends the budget from pre- the budget from previous years, but it also has a couple other things where it can get funds. Because the amount varies from year to year, it isn't reliable enough to spend on recurring expenses like salaries, so we use it for one-time expenses like these. Item A covers smaller day-to-day safety improvements to our sidewalks and intersections, especially for pedestrians and cyclists. Larger road safety items are to be covered in Article 6. The current breathing apparatus that our firefighters use to enter smoky areas have reached the end of their useful lives. Item B covers half the replacement cost for all of our SCBA units. The other half is being covered by a public safety fund established when the Avalon Apartments were built. We need two to three new cruisers per year to cover normal replacement. Item C covers those costs for fiscal year 2025. Older vehicles are more expensive to repair and are out of service more frequently. Upkeep on our facilities will cost many millions of dollars over the next decade. Item D allows the town to begin to advance several projects, mostly to be used for design expenses. We'll be back to town meeting next year with specific project proposals. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue requires that the Assessor's Office inspect all properties in town every 10 years. Traditionally, Acton has done this with a large project like this one every decade. However, after this project, the plan is to transition to inspect 10% of the parcels each year as part of our normal operating budget, so you shouldn't have to have a big project like this again. Item F covers the fireworks for July 4th, 2025. In order to reserve a fireworks vendor, we have to plan for the 4th of July more than a year in advance. The total cost will be about $50,000. The town will seek donations for the remaining amount. Note that we, in last year's town meeting, appropriated funds for this year's 4th of July. Thank you for supporting these one-time capital expenses for public works, public safety, and public celebrations. The Select Board recommends Article 5.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee does recommend this article as well.
Town meeting members? I see none in the auditorium.
There's nobody standing in the upper gym, Madam Moderator.
There is no one standing in the lower gym.
Given...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Whoops.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
We have somebody approaching the microphone.
Okay. Go ahead, whenever you get there. Is the microphone working?
One.
Yeah, now it is. I just want to know, we are voting on all these items, not separated by letter. Is that correct? We can't parse our vote. It's either all the letters or not?
Right, this vote is on all these items, A through F.
Any other comments or questions? Given that this is a majority vote to pass, we'll try the voice vote to save us a little time. So, all who are in favor, please say aye. Any who are opposed, please say nay. Clearly passes in the auditorium?
Clearly passes in the upper gymnasium.
It passes in the lower gym as well.
Thank you. The vote clearly passes for Article 5.
Thank you.
Article 6. Mr. Charter moves that the town, 1, appropriate $6,700,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purposes set forth in the table below, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $6,700,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. 2. A. DPW Facility Improvements Fueling Station Replacement, or DPW-12, $2,600,000. B. Replacement of 2009 Aerial Truck Ladder, FD-5, for $2,100,000. C. Complete Streets Prospect Intersection Great Road Sidewalks, DPW-15, $1,200,000. D. Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements Bridges Culverts, DPW-23, $800,000, for a total of $6,700,000. 3. Authorize the Select Board to enter into one or more facility-user agreements for terms up to 20 years, and any such resulting contributions may be used to defray the debt service of such borrowing. And 4. Transfer from free cash and appropriate $564,138 for the payment of the first year of debt service and underwriting costs on such borrowing. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. Mr. Charter?
Thank you. So, this slide illustrates the projects requested, the total cost of each project, and the expected annual cost for the debt service loans at a projected 5% rate. The length of the terms for each debt is controlled by state regulations, with longer-term borrowing allowed on more permanent purchases and infrastructure. This year, a total of $6,700,000 is requested, with an estimated annual debt service of $564,138 per year. These requests are in keeping with the Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan that was reviewed and approved by the Select Board this past fall. Article 6A is for the sum of $2,600,000 for the replacement of the fuel station at the public works facility located at 14 Forest Road. This was identified as a short-term goal of the Select Board in 2022, and the Select Board has approved the expenditure of $250,000 for design and permitting of the fuel station, utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds. The plans are well-advanced, and the decision has been made to utilize town staff and equipment for the preliminary clearing and site work to control costs. Construction should commence during 2024. The site is adjacent to the driveway into the public works facility, and there should be no increase in the amount of traffic going into the station. There has been a fuel station at this site since 1970. Continuing to have our own fuel tanks, as we have done for the last 50 years, is economical due to being able to make bulk purchases for fuel, saves on payroll by having unimpeded access to the fuel pumps for the employees, and provides a degree of resiliency in case of severe weather by having an adequate supply of fuel on hand at all times. Existing underground fuel tanks are at the end of their lifespan and need to be replaced with above-ground tanks. Gradually, the town, AB Schools, and Case Fleets will be converted over to electric. But electric-heavy vehicles are not available, reliable, or affordable to replace the fleets yet. The impact of recent purchases of electric and hybrid vehicles, and the expectation that this pattern will continue, is being considered when sizing the new tanks. It is expected that there will be need for fossil-fuel tanks for the fleets for at least the next 20 years. Presently, the Acton Fleet, which includes heavy equipment and public safety vehicles, is comprised of 131 vehicles. The Acton Box for Regional Schools Fleet is comprised of 62 vehicles. And the Case Fleet is comprised of 75 vehicles, but in the past and probably in the future will be comprised of as many as 120 vehicles based on student needs. And there will be an agreement reached between the Town of Acton, the AB Schools, and Case Collaborative to underwrite some of the borrowing costs. Article 6B is for the sum of $2,100,000 to replace the existing 2009 aerial truck. That truck is presently housed at the South Acton Fire Station, but the new fire station, North Acton, was designed to accommodate a ladder truck, so it could be deployed from that location as well. The present truck has over 81,000 miles on it and 6,000 hours of operation. It is subject to an increasing rate of being taken out of service due to mechanical failures, and there is rust and deterioration in the airlines, waterway, and turntable. The city of Beverly, Massachusetts recently spent over $0.5 million to have their ladder truck refurbished, and that would provide only a few years of added service. Thus far this year, we have spent $51,000 on repairs, and more work is needed. We feel full replacement is the most financially prudent way to go. When the unit is out of service, we need to rely on mutual aid from neighboring towns, which is always generously provided, but there can be a delay in response, and providing mutual aid impacts the level of service in those neighboring towns. There are many multi-story buildings in town presently, including commercial buildings, schools, and apartment buildings, many of which are located at extreme edges of town, such as the Avalon Apartments on Negoyd Park Drive and the proposed Powder Mill Apartments, which will be located on Route 62. Additionally, many of the three-story apartment buildings are located upslope from driveways or are surrounded by parking areas, so the lateral reach of the ladder can be as needed as much as the vertical reach of the ladder. Even two-story, single-family homes can be hard to access due to setbacks and trees, and having a long lateral reach is important. Because we only have one ladder truck and we have buildings and locations that require such a truck all over town, the ladder truck makes frequent, long runs from one side of town to the other, racking up the mileage. The very high cost of replacement ladder truck is significant. The lead time of procuring a new truck is even more significant, as is expected that it will take two to three years to obtain a truck after it is ordered. By that time, the present unit will have around 100,000 miles on it and 7,200 hours of service. Article 6C requests the sum of $1,200,000 for various complete streets projects. The most visible of these projects will be the reconstruction of the intersection of Main Street and Prospect Street in South Acton. This has been a problematic intersection with frequent crashes and almost constant traffic conflicts for many years. Numerous plans have been investigated, and there have been several public input sessions held over the last four years. The proposed plan will channelize the traffic so that vehicles leaving Main Street to enter onto Prospect Street will do so in the northerly portion of the intersection close to South Acton Gas, and vehicles entering Main Street from Prospect Street will do so only from the southerly portion of the intersection closest to the Discovery Museum. This plan does not include any traffic signals at this location. The balance of the funding will be used to continue plans and implementation of safety improvements, such as sidewalks, bike lanes, traffic calming measures, and crosswalks in various locations around town, including along Great Road. Article 6D requests the sum of $800,000 for planning and implementing stormwater improvements throughout town. This includes work on catch basins, retention basins, culverts, drainage lines, and bridges. The Stormwater Asset Management Plan projects a continuing need for approximately $1 million per year to repair, replace, and enhance our stormwater infrastructure. So this is just the first bite. Many of our existing culverts are corrugated pipe, installed over 50 years ago, and rotted out at the waterline, as you see here. And they are close to failure. Some of our older culverts are over 100 years old and are made of granite slabs and are also failing. One such culvert is located near 20 Main Street in South Acton and will need to be replaced in the next year or so. The requested funds will implement some of these projects and will advance the design and permitting of other larger projects, such as on Stowe Street at Fort Pond Brook and on Carlisle Road at Neshoba Brook. The recent weather pattern seems to be that we are getting more high-intensity rainstorms that can overwhelm older and deteriorated drainage structures. New infrastructure needs to be designed and constructed to accommodate the changing climates. The Select Board recommends this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Comments from the town meeting members? Yes, sir. Just hit the, I think you have to hit the button there. There you go.
Press the talk, got it. Hi, Johnny Ambrose from Seneca Road. Just a question about how this affects the town's total debt load and if the committees have a recommendation as to our current debt load being above or below what you recommend. Thank you.
Mr. Charter? Go ahead.
I would defer that to the Finance Committee.
The debt loads that we have operate well within the operating budget. Anything that would be too large is taken out as a debt exclusion and decided whether it's affordable by all of us. Long story short, this is all well within a level that we are comfortable with for borrowing.
Thank you. I believe it, no, I know it was stated it was well within the normal debt limit. Next time, can you pull the microphone up closer? Microphone 3, go ahead.
Sorry, is it on?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
From Mass Ave. And I am for this article, but I want people to understand that this is the cost of growth. So when people talk about a developer does something for this project or that project and pays for infrastructure or something, that over time, it's the stuff that they don't pay for that adds up, the one, two little projects and all that stuff. So in the end, it's millions of dollars to pay for all these projects to support people in a safe and healthy manner. And so, we'll talk again about some zoning tomorrow, and this is what I'm talking about when I say cost of growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the large gym?
Yes, we have a speaker with microphone 1.
Go ahead.
Hi, Judy Kronwasser, Parker Street. The Prospect Street change looks to me, and I must be missing something, like you're putting a "do not enter" in one spot and allowing exit from the other. That doesn't seem like 1.2 million.
Any other comments or questions from either of the gyms?
Moderator, we have two speakers in the lower gym.
Okay, let's hear from them.
This is Joseph Beth Wilson from 53 Seminole. I heard that you were possibly thinking of appropriating some money to put in bike lanes. I am generally in favor of bike lanes. However, I do remember when they put the bike lane in on Central Street, and they put it on, and Central Street was too narrow to put in a bike lane on both sides, so they put it in on only one side. What that did was it made with the lane, without the bike lane, too narrow to cycle in. Before, I had been able to safely ride in both directions. After that, I could not. So I would say that for bike lanes, either both lanes or no lanes is probably best. So, thank you.
Thank you. The other speaker?
Hi, my name is Jim with the Two Fisher Pass. My comment is not about this article, but about the voting process. I think everybody has an easy-to-use handheld device. It does take some time for people to first use, but after that, it's quite smooth. I don't understand why you're still using voiceover for some of the articles. I think we should all use handheld device. And in addition, the voting has three options. I think you should show every voter the count of all three different votes, not just a yes or no.
Thank you.
We have a speaker in the upper gym.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, hello, this is Prem Goyal from Lexington Drive. And I had a question on 6C, which says, "Complete Prospect Street Project." And I had a question on 6C, which says, "Complete Prospect Street Project." So how should we interpret that? Is the project running over budget, or has the scope of the project increased, or did we start the project without the required approvals?
Mr. Charter.
As I understand your question, you're asking if it has received full approvals at this point?
The project says, "Complete Prospect Street." So my question is, is the project running over budget, meaning we already had budget, we did some work, and we're still completing, and we need more money to finish it? Or had the work started even before the approval happened?
I would call on a Town Manager in the gym to respond to that question.
He's making his way to the microphone, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
John Mandurari, Town Manager. Nice to see you all. My understanding is the question is, why does the Prospect Street Intersection Project need to be completed? That is because we typically would get appropriations for design funds, and then once we have the design finalized, we then ask for the construction funding. The request before Town Meeting tonight is for the construction funding.
Thank you. Microphone one in the auditorium? Whoops. Yep.
Yeah, my name is Ethan Fleming. I live on Nagog Hill Road. I just want to mention about the bike lane topic, that a lot of things that people don't understand from someone who has experience doing a lot of my transportation by bike. I've also lost my license to epilepsy and gotten it back more times than I can count in my life, and the bike is a very useful tool for people who can't drive because of medical reasons or disability reasons. I would really like a bigger consideration on more bike lane access in this town. And I want to also mention another thing I've learned by working with Boston Bikes of City Hall in the city, is that a lot of studies have shown that the wider a traffic lane is, the faster what we call the imaginary speed limit is. So what I would really like to suggest is, when working on ideas for more bike lanes, why don't we consider narrowing the car lanes more in order to help reduce the imaginary speed limit?
Thank you. Any other comments? I see a person coming forward. Yes, microphone four. Yep, go ahead.
I would concur, oh, sorry.
Could you introduce yourself?
John Wright Terrace. I would concur with the people speaking about bike lanes. For as much as Acton very much appears to be burgeoning to become a city, if you're driving Cambridge, the streets are much, let's say Mass Ave, from Arlington going to Harvard Square and elsewhere, there is copious amount of room made for bike lanes inside the cars where the cars park, then cars park, then there's one lane for the cars to, you know, do their transportation. And just like the gentleman before me said, the road is narrower, and so cars just necessarily drive slower. It has also been argued, that you may not be pursuing this, if you pull out yellow lines and the streets have no lines, cars go slower then again because they don't know what the hell to do. And so they drive more cautiously, and that's good for cyclists and pedestrians. I've argued many times to the police, Chief Kogan knows me very well, that cars travel much too fast. There are occasions when I walk in the bloody street to slow them down.
Thank you. Microphone one.
I move the previous question.
There's a motion to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It is, any opposed? It is unanimous in the auditorium?
It's unanimous in the gym.
Small gym?
Nearly unanimous. In here, we did have two speakers standing, and they're maybe not familiar with how this works.
And the vote in the cafeteria? To cut off debate? Can they hear me? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we clearly have enough votes to cut off debate. This is a two-thirds vote on the Town Capitol Infrastructure Design and Construction. So we will fire up the clickers. So hit the orange button first, and then the blue button. Is everyone set in the other rooms?
Yes, we're all set.
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Cafeteria is all set. All right. So if you are voting aye or yes, press A. If you wish to abstain, press C. If you are voting nay or no, press E.
Madam Moderator, we have one person who is trying to replace his clicker.
Okay. Is there someone there to assist?
Yes.
And the Large Gym?
We're all set.
And the cafeteria? Not yet, okay.
The head teller tells us to wait, please.
Okay, yep.
Cafeteria is still counting.
All right. They're still counting in the cafeteria. So that will take a couple of minutes. we have more voters than clickers, but all of the votes are the same. We're just waiting for that count to, that hand count, which is something like 50 or so voters, and for that to get added into the tally. Just in case anybody thinks that we're missing them, we are not. So here's a question for you. How many people grew up knowing Town Meeting? Okay, in the auditorium, that is a distinct minority. If you grew up where Town Meeting was a thing? Oh, Moore, all right. Still, still a minority. I, myself, did. I went to my first Town Meeting when I was 18 years old in Brownville, Maine, in the American Legion Hall, which was about as big as this middle thing right here. And the moderator is elected off the floor, and one of my high school teachers, he went to two or three towns and would be willing to, in his own town, which was where the school was, and I was in the next town over, kind of like Boxborough minus, and he, but he didn't get elected that year. It was a guy from town who was 1,000 years old, and I, that was my first experience of seeing a moderator, and I was not impressed. And he appointed the tellers from the floor, and the piece de resistance is the, it's a five-town school district, and in all of the towns, the school committee or school board representatives are elected off the floor of Town Meeting. So anybody who did not, like if people are saying, hey, you should be the, you should get reelected, or you should be elected to school committee, they wouldn't go. And I think that's still true. It's like, no, I've had enough of that business. So it's definitely a different flavor, and it would get done in one night, you know? Probably started at six, I can't remember, and wouldn't go much later than 10:00, one night, not that much business in a town of 1,200. But I did grow to love it, and I was excited to move here to Acton 30-some years ago, where I could actually participate in Town Meeting. And I can't say it's been, you know, fun every time, but, but at least, at least it feels, like I said, we've all come together to conduct the town's business, and whether we agree or disagree, we are here with the best interests in town. Have we got a vote yet? Okay, we have a vote? The article clearly passes by a margin of 85% to 15%. That brings us to Acton-Boxborough School Assessment. So as those folks are coming down, this is Article 7, and I will ask the Chair or Acton Chair, somebody to introduce the members before you get started and I read the article. Please, please introduce the members. I haven't done the motion yet, so don't get into that.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Wilson, Vice Chair for Acton, and I'd like to introduce our committee members: Ben Blumenthal, Tori Campbell, Liz Folks, Lakshmi Kadja, Adam Klein, Jimmy Kremer, Vikram Parikh, Andrew Schwartz, Leela Rama Shundran, and Yenchen Schmidt.
Thank you. Article 7, Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment. Ms. Wilson moves that the town raise and appropriate $79,70,675 to fund the fiscal year 2025 assessment of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Wilson, to your motion.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank all the voters who came out to vote last Tuesday. It is clear that we don't all experience our schools in the same way. As we delve into our budget presentation, let us not forget the interdependent relationship that binds our community and schools together. We stand not as isolated entities, but as integral parts of a complete structure, each reliant on the other for success and prosperity. We look forward to your constructive comments, and will continue to make ourselves available to the community for feedback. We are grateful to all for their time and commitment to our students, staff, and broader communities. Acton-Boxborough schools are an exceptional value to our community. We consistently rank among the top schools in the Commonwealth, and two of our schools have been recognized as national blue ribbon schools, all of this while we spend $7.5 million less than the state average. Not only are we excellent stewards of town money, but we do more for our students with less funding. We felt it was important this year to get more into the financials than we have in past years. So let's dive more into our per pupil spending. When comparing Acton-Boxborough to the standardized state average, you can see the areas where we spend closer to the average and significantly less than the average. While there have been some questions on the administrative costs to the district, you can see that we spend almost 21% less than the state average. The cost of substitutes is what is driving our spend in the other teaching services area. Professional development is another area where we are significantly below the state average in providing the necessary supports for our teachers to meet the needs of our students. Another major area of underinvestment is providing our students and staff with the instructional materials like textbooks and classroom supplies that they need for modern learning. Over the past years, the district made a concerted effort to increase the counselors and psychologists in our schools. This was in response to the increased mental health needs of our student population. School budgets are impacted by the same inflationary pressures we all face at home. You can see that over the past three years, the school budget remained close to or below 3%. This was while costs were increasing well over 3%. As we worked to keep our budget affordable for the community, the district made use of pandemic relief funds, used reserves, and reduced staff by 40 FTEs, full-time equivalent employees, to make sure that we were respectful of our community's ability to afford the excellent education they expect. Much has been said about the decrease in student population, and I'd like to share a tale of two trends. Yes, it is true that since 2016, our student population has decreased by 563 students. In that same time, however, we have seen an increase in the following areas. Students who come from low-income families have more than doubled. Students whose first language is something other than English have increased just over 8%. English-language learners, students who come to us with little to no English, have doubled to a total of 421 students. In all, these students make up a high-needs population that grew from 25% to almost 1/3 of our student population. This change in our community's demographic means we are all living in a more diverse town, and that is a real benefit for all residents. But it also means we have more diverse needs that we need to address in our schools. Those needs require more and specialized- Those needs require more and specialized staffing. In crafting the school budget, we encountered significant challenges in sustaining the current level of services for the upcoming year. Put plainly, a level services budget entails maintaining the status quo, keeping existing services intact without introducing major additions or reductions. This approach serves as a sensible starting point for our budgeting process, providing a familiar foundation from which to make informed decisions and promote responsible financial management. We do have an obligation to make sure our classrooms are supervised in case of a staff absence. Finding substitutes continues to be a challenge and is a driver in our personnel costs. Some of our students require increased special education services. The staffing required for in-school special education services costs an additional $750,000 this year. On top of that, the costs for external special education programs and student transportation to those programs have increased significantly. Much has been discussed around the Acton Health Insurance Trust, which has provided health insurance for school and town employees for over 20 years. The trust experienced several months of extraordinary claims this year. This created a financial strain on the district for FY '24 that would carry over into FY ' '25. Had we remained in the Acton Health Insurance Trust for next year, the increase in our budget would have been $3.4 million. We will speak more about how we are addressing health insurance later. Ultimately, the school committee is proposing a budget that reduces just over $3 million from what would be required to provide level services. This would be the third year in a row where we have cut $2 to $3 million from our level services budget to close the gap between costs and available revenue. Once again, we are not anticipating a meaningful increase in revenue from state sources. As you can see here, the new revenue comes from a migrant shelter grant, as well as a variety of new and increased student fees, such as kindergarten, athletics, activities, among others. These fees do move some costs to the users of the actual services. However, it is essential to consider the potential impact on access, equity, and participation as these fees increase. Outside of staff cuts, savings come from a reduction in technology and capital budgets, as well as employee health insurance. We are moving to a statewide health insurance program that reduces risk and minimizes volatility. This was a good first step in ensuring our schools remain financially sustainable for the future. We expect to see savings from our switch to the new program. However, we are anticipating those savings will be needed to pay off the remaining claims during the transition. As previously mentioned, this will be the third year of staffing cuts. The past two years have seen cuts to almost 12 FTE in district leadership and administration, just over 14 FTE in the elementary schools, and roughly 13 FTE in the junior high and high school. In addition to the 40 FTE from the past two years, next year, we'll see a reduction of an additional 20 FTE from across all areas of the school district. This is even with the approval of the override. As always, the district continues to evaluate programs and class sizes to make sure they stay within school committee guidelines and provide an appropriate education for all students. As we mentioned earlier, our demographics and needs of our students are changing. So even in a challenging budget environment, we identified opportunities to provide modern and relevant curriculum. These important investments represent 2/10ths of a percent of our budget. The final proposed budget for FY '25 is just over $114 million. This represents a 7.68% increase over the FY '24 budget. The final assessment to the towns is approximately $95 million. In previous years, use of reserves reduced the assessments to both communities. Given that the school reserves are at very low levels, there is no planned use for FY ' '25. Any surplus available at the end of this year will be used to begin rebuilding our reserves. The act and share of the assessment is just over $79 million, up by 10.33% from FY '24. Looking at the budget history for our school district, you can see that over the past seven years, we have consistently worked to keep our operating budget within the available resources of the two communities. The increases in expenses from the past three years of high inflation have led to the correction we are seeing in FY '25. This correction is expected to be a one-time event, as actions like the switch to the new health insurance program and elimination of the use of reserves have already been taken to make our budgets more sustainable for the future. Looking forward, the committee is dedicated to engaging with the community around identifying additional opportunities to ensure the budget remains within the resources of our communities. We wish to extend our gratitude to the leadership of the town for the collaboration on this year's budget, and look forward to continuing our work together in the future. Before we leave tonight, we wanted to share some brief highlights from the past year. We recognize this is a challenging budget for both the residents and the schools. We have tried our best to make compromises that are both considerate to the community, but not detrimental to our schools. I want to thank the town meeting members for your continued support for our school district and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board Recommendation?
Thank you. Our award-winning school district is a point of pride for our town. The school committee and school district were active participants in the ALG process as we worked together to figure out the financial situation this year. The new budget maintains the traditional apportionment of revenue between the town and the schools. The Select Board voted to recommend Article VII.
Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee Recommendation is to recommend this.
Thank you. Town Meeting Members. I see, oh, one person, ready. Go ahead. You've got to turn on the mic. It should light up red. There you go.
Okay. I just had a question. Why isn't this vote 2/3rds majority?
Mr. Martin?
So 2/3rds votes are typically only required for certain things, like borrowing or certain kinds of zoning articles. Most articles are just a majority vote.
Thank you. Microphone one.
All right. My name is Michael Taylor. I live at 31 Conan Street, and I have children in kindergarten and grade three at Merriam, and I want to speak briefly in support of the budget. There's rightly been a lot of concern about the financial impact of higher property taxes on low-income families in our community. But I'd like to offer an additional consideration, the financial impact of the school budget cuts on families whose children have complex learning, social, and medical needs that are currently supported by the district. My son has Dravet syndrome, a rare and severe form of epilepsy that requires support in forms of physical therapy, speech therapy, learning support, and one-on-one aid to ensure his physical safety, and saint-like support from school nursing staff. My daughter has received counseling support from the schools in partnership with external counseling services to support her well-being in the context of our challenging family life, particularly when those challenges intersect with the school day. My husband and I regularly remind each other how incredibly fortunate we are that we happened to move to Acton before my son was born, before we'd ever even heard of Dravet syndrome or been hit by that unlucky bolt of lightning, and how that decision gave us access to the amazing resources we have to support our kids. Many Dravet families I know around Massachusetts are forced to pay out of pocket for services to supplement subpar school provisions that only meet bare minimum requirements, withdraw their children from school to homeschool, and even at times reduce their workforce participation to provide support the schools can't. In contrast, we have Acton-Boxborough, not perfect, no district is, but small class sizes, math and reading specialists, classroom assistants, special educators, and counselors, all at risk if we do not pass this budget, are critical to the incredible job our district does at supporting our students and families with complex needs. And the absence of this funding, that burden will add to the many financial burdens already shouldered by families like mine, and will be well in excess of any tax increases. Some will be lucky enough to be able to afford it, many will not. So please vote in favor of the budget and continue our ability to serve these families.
Thank you. Microphone four.
Good evening. Mike Gowing, 93 Harris Street. I'm at the con mic, but I'll tell you that I'm for the schools. I'm for the town that draws people to it, both with its school system and its community services. I'm for the teachers who work hard at their jobs. I'm for education. When I'm at the con mic, it's to ask you to vote against the poor budgeting practices. I would argue that for the past 10 years, a level service budget was uncalled for at the state. Student population had declined over 10% during that period. The school committee has bemoaned the fact that state aid was reduced. State aid is paid per student. If the number of students declines, the state aid declines. It's simple math. While the number of students declined by 600 during this period, the number of teachers and staff increased by almost 17%, but it was easier to ask for that level service budget and trim it accordingly when pressed, as they did this year. That is why you'll hear them tell you that they had to reduce the number of teachers the past two years because of budget shortfalls. Had they simply allowed the number of teachers to fall through attrition over the 10 years, it wouldn't have been necessary. They will tell you that this is unforeseen. Not true. We submitted a change to the school budget article two years ago at this very town meeting to reduce it by 1.2 million, because we could easily see that their budgeting method was unsustainable. They got voted down. Now, here we are, two years later, with the district asking for an operational override, because they've spent down all of the $5.6 million they got in federal and state monies that they received for the pandemic, as well as their savings. They need to learn to live within their budget, just like you and I do. Bad math is unsustainable. Please vote no on this article.
Thank you. Are there any speakers in the large gym?
Yes, I recognize the young woman with the white shirt there.
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Is this on now?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sunmi Sistu. I live on High Street. I am a soon-to-be graduate of ABRHS. I've had the benefit and privilege of receiving a world-class education at this institution, and I know that my fellow students would concur. The success is in no small part due to the incredible efforts of our teachers and administration. To maintain the status as a world-class institution, giving a world-class education that is found in very few districts nationwide, it is imperative that we ensure that we maintain the status quo. Any reduction of staff would be detrimental to the level of achievement and educational prowess that our district is able to boast. Our school and students, both individually and collectively, have been recognized for their success and academic achievement locally, nationally, and even internationally. We cannot let this success go to waste for future students. When you vote, I want you to keep in mind that you are not voting for yourself. You are voting for each and every student in this district, from kindergarten to 12th grade, who deserves the same stellar education that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another? Is there another speaker in the gym?
Yes, Madam Moderator, speak with the front microphone.
Hi, Nijan Datta, Wincliffe Drive. Before I read my statement, the slide says 60 reductions in FTEs over the last three years.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
The State Department of Education website says that you only reduce by eight FTEs, so I don't know where that 60 number came from, but I don't have the data in front of me to disprove you at this point. Anyway, two years ago, town meeting voted down an amendment to reduce the school assessment. The presentation of the amendment pointed out the reasons why the schools are on a fiscally unsustainable path. It pointed out the excessive use of reserves, one-time reserves, and use of one-time funds for operating expenses. Unfortunately, it failed 60/40. Many people warned of an impending override if the necessary adjustments were not made. And of course, those adjustments were never made. A steady enrollment decline, and you know, how you choose your dates, over 15 years, you've dropped 1,000 students, approximately 1,000 students, and it has not been accompanied by a steady, the same decline in teachers and administrators. In fact, that trend has gone up. Salary increases are higher than what the town taxpayers and the private sector and those on fixed incomes with cost-of-living adjustments are getting. This is a path of ever-ratcheting tax hikes, taking a larger and larger percentage of taxpayer income. If you vote yes on this assessment, just like two years ago, there will be no incentive to change habits. They will take it as a mandate to continue business as usual. And we will be back here debating another override in a few years. Public memory is short, and the same scare tactics of threatening to let go of the most important teachers will once again be dangled before the voters. Let's not make the same mistake that we made two years ago. This is your chance to force them to make the needed changes to bring the schools on a fiscally sustainable path, and more importantly, on a path that is affordable to Acton taxpayers. Please vote no.
Thank you. Are there any speakers in the small gym?
Madam Moderator, we do have two speakers at the microphone.
Okay, let's hear from them.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Toby, and I live on Mohegan Road. I am a social worker and a parent. My wife and I moved to Acton four years ago as our oldest child was entering kindergarten. We were just a few months into the COVID pandemic. Times were so uncertain. We felt worried for our daughter entering a new school, a place we'd not been able to visit. As the school days began, she would learn her ABCs, and we'd learn that she was in the most capable hands. I can say unequivocally that our daughter excelled that year because of the sheer determination of her kindergarten teacher, Kestrel Share. She worked tirelessly to create a semblance of normalcy in that classroom, despite what was happening in the world outside. Most importantly, she fostered a love of learning for our daughter that still shines brightly today. Kestrel's steady hand extended to us as well, with her support and guidance helping us to navigate the early days of elementary school under incredibly challenging conditions. When our son entered kindergarten this fall, admittedly, we were disappointed that he was placed with a different teacher. However, those feelings quickly dissipated as we discovered he was in the best of hands with Darcy Tedesco. She was quick to reach out last fall, when our son showed signs that he was struggling. She's been an incredible support and advocate for him. He was recently diagnosed with dyslexia and will need specialized instruction to learn to read. So tonight, much rests in your hands. Will Kestrel and Darcy have the resources they need to continue to be effective educators? Will my son have the literacy support he needs in order to learn to read? Please, extend your hand for our community, for one another, for our future.
Thank you. The second speaker in the small gym, please.
Carla Hyler, 531 Old Stone Brook. I am a teacher. I left the journalism field to become a fifth-grade teacher. So granted, my comments may feel a little biased, but it also comes from raising three boys who are on the spectrum. Massachusetts guarantees a fair and appropriate education for every child in the public school system. What people fail to realize when they say, "Back in my day, we didn't have ADHD, autism, you name it. We have better testing tools. We have better recognition." Unfortunately, we don't have the money for the support that often people complain about. The reality is, when Massachusetts has just added dyslexia screening to school students, we are finding out more and more that students need more and more services. So "back in my day" no longer counts. The weird kid in the back of the room that could tell you every baseball statistic from 1927 to the present, we now know is on the spectrum and has special needs. To serve those needs for a fair and appropriate education, which is his legal right, costs money. It's not a question of living within a budget. We are being told, "This has to happen." And as human beings, we should be supporting, "This has to happen." I understand it's frustrating. As a teacher, it's even more frustrating that I am forced, even though I do not have special ed or reading specialist certification, I had to learn how to use special tools to teach my dyslexic students, to teach my hard-of-hearing students, to teach my spectrum students so that they would have a love of learning just like the other students in my classroom.
Your time has expired.
So I ask people to please pass this addition to our budget.
Thank you. We'll return to the auditorium. Microphone one.
The speaker at the back, microphone?
Bill, Mr. Mullin. We're back in the auditorium.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Sorry, yep. Microphone one. You've got to hit the button there.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Clifford, and I'm on Heritage Road. I'm a mom of two kids in the Acton Public Elementary Schools, and I've been a Realtor for 15 years. I'm voting yes on the budget tonight. Without this funding, as it has been said, it is our kids who will suffer. More than ever, young people today need resources, consistency, and continued support from trained professionals. The pandemic has impacted our kids, and the last thing they need is less resources and more disruptive changes. Whether you have children in the schools or not, these are the Whether you have children in the schools or not, these are the kids in our community, and they're depending on us. Please remember, they are also our future leaders and will be the voices in our community someday. Let's give them all of the tools they need right now. As a Realtor for the past 15 years, I've seen buyers seek out towns such as Acton and Boxborough with a reputable and highly-rated school system, and also pay a premium to buy a home here. For example, last month, some single-family homes in Acton sold for 15% and higher over the list price. On an $800,000 home, 15% is $120,000 over the asking price. Clearly, buyers are willing to pay a premium for a home in a reputable school district. However, I'm afraid they will not be willing to compromise on their children's education. To maintain this level of desirability now and in future years, the schools must stay funded and provide the necessary resources to continue drawing home buyers into our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone three, I believe somebody's there.
Oh, is this on? Yes, it is. Hi, I'm Glenn Cody. I live on Strawberry Hill Road. I'll be voting yes. I thought about what to say, and then I realized that it's pretty said perfectly in the warrant on page 19. The challenge facing the schools is that without increased funding, we face catastrophic reductions to staff and programs. While we recognize that the challenge of asking taxpayers for additional funding, we also understand that without that funding, our schools will not provide the quality of education our community has come to expect. That's from Peter Light. He's the superintendent, page 19. That is crystal clear to me. We should vote yes and fund public education. This is simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four.
That's quite unnecessary. John from Wright Terrace, once again. I amend or ask for an amendment that there should be a two-thirds vote and ask for a second.
The motion is out of order. Because the requirement is majority, not two-thirds.
I asked for a change. Did I not?
Moving on. Back to microphone one. I think you turned off instead of on. There you go.
Thank you. Samuel Sullivan Fieldman, Drummer Road. And I want to follow on largely with what the person at this microphone here said before. You know, a large part of the reason why people come to Acton is because of the school district. I myself came here 10 years ago with my wife and our young kids not yet ready for kindergarten. Because of all the towns that have excellent schools in Massachusetts, this is by far the one that is the most affordable. The others that have excellent school districts like Concord are just absolutely astronomical in their prices, which is the same reason why now, 10 years later, my neighbors upstairs also moved in as renters and are also supporting this. They have a child on the way as well. I was surprised when I was at the transfer station a couple of weeks ago campaigning on this, that actually, the person campaigning on the other side agreed with me on all of those points. He also agreed that the schools are the primary driver for why people move to Acton, and he agreed that if we damage the school district, which any budget lower than this would absolutely do, that would be devastating to the town, devastating to the property values. Where he disagreed, and I understand, is he didn't want his taxes to go up. And I totally understand that, but we had that vote last week. That was what that vote was about. This vote today is about the priorities of how we fund our town, how we protect it, and how we make sure that going forward, our kids will have the advantage of the great education and people continue to want to move here out past the roundabout, which nobody wants to go past unless there's a really good reason. And our schools are the reason why people are willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four, please.
I call the previous question.
It's been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Madam Moderator, we had probably 90, 10, maybe 80, 10.
Okay, thank you. Small gym.
Just about the same.
And I don't...
About the same as the average.
Thank you. Okay. Cafeteria, same. Same, okay. Debate has been cut off. We'll now vote on the motion, which is, Ms. Wildison moves that the town raise and appropriate $79,077,000 to fund the fiscal year 2025 assessment of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. Requires a majority to pass. We will use the clickers. So you may turn on the clicker with the orange button. And then press the blue button to sync up, or whatever the correct term is. If you are voting yes or aye, please press A. If you are abstaining, please press C. And if you are voting no or nay, please press E. And we will continue with a hand count in the cafeteria. Question?
My understanding is that there was a bus that they were waiting for at Beth Elahim that was supposed to have been provided that is currently on its way. They were waiting for half an hour for that bus to get there, and it is nearly here. I just want to make sure that those people who have been attempting to get to town meeting and through no fault of their own have not been able to get there yet are able to vote.
Yes.
Moderator? Madam Moderator? Yeah, I know, but I need to tell her. If you are in the lower gym, the vote did not go through electronically properly. We need to revote in here.
Was there a comment from another room?
Hello, Madam Moderator, we are having to revote in the lower gym.
Okay, so do we have to completely start over or just them? That will work, okay. So just go ahead and do that in the small gym. The folks who are on the bus should check in and go directly to the cafeteria.
Yes.
Where they will be able to vote. Which...
Yes, you're going to need to restart your clickers. Turn them off and go through the entire process again. We apologize, but we wanted to catch everybody before.
Right, and there will be a bunch of people heading into the cafeteria who will vote by hand as soon as they get there. So while we are waiting...
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Question?
Yes, where are you?
I...
Oh, thank you.
I arrived at 5:30.
Yes, sir.
Making sure that I was here on time, could get a good seat, and do my civic duty. I'm not sure why people are unable to plan. It's been two hours and 20 minutes.
It's one of the mysteries of our time, is all I can say.
It may be a mystery. It doesn't make it right.
I live with people, I work with people who I question the same thing myself. So I... But they were waiting for transportation, so it was without... I mean, they made a plan, but all the links didn't connect, apparently.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, at microphone one.
All right, we're ready to vote in the lower gym again.
Okay, timeout here in the auditorium, please. You gotta turn on your microphone. Microphone one. There you go.
Bob Miller, 84 Windsor Avenue. I think point of order is a question. I heard you say earlier that when voting started, doors were closed, no one was allowed in or out. So how do you allow a bus to come in?
Correct.
Well, it's to keep people from wandering, but I believe that...
Are people ready to vote in this room?
I'm on the mic. I'm on the mic.
Okay.
All right, everybody in the lower gym.
Do we know how many folks are on the bus? We don't know. All right. So this is a sad situation then, isn't it? If they got here in like two minutes, because we really need to get on with this, do we have any information on where they are, what the story is?
Hey, are we all powered up?
I'm hearing yelling elsewhere, but...
Madam Moderator, will you please let us know if we need to revote in this room? Just say, "Yes, we do," or "No, we don't."
Okay, we are going to continue with a vote. This is a multi-town vote. We need to... The people on the bus have not heard the argument, despite they probably know how they want to vote, and if it is that small of a number, it may or may not change the result, but...
If you could please be quiet in the auditorium. We cannot vote in the other gym, and you guys keep talking over the gentleman who's trying to kindly help us to vote.
Okay, so in the auditorium, have people voted?
Yeah.
In the big gym, have people voted?
Yes.
In the small gym, have people voted?
No.
Okay, they're still working on that. In the cafeteria, the people who were present at the start of the vote. They voted? By hand? Still counting? They're still counting in the cafeteria, the existing people. The new people will have to not be allowed in. The new people will not be allowed to enter. Sir, do you still have a comment?
I think in the future, we should make...
Could we have order in this room, please?
Ooh.
All right, the lower caf... I'm sorry, lower gym, we need to start the vote over. We've already shut it off, we've already turned it back on, and we've hit the blue refresh button. If the screen says ready, we're gonna wait right there. No.
Yep. If everyone has voted in here, which I heard they did, we will close the vote. I'm yelling as loud as I can. The vote will be closed. Is there anyone who has not voted in here? The vote is closed in the auditorium. And then they'll close them individually in the other rooms. And hand count in the cafeteria, which is in progress. The vote is closed in this room. Okay, let me just... I'm not sure they can hear me in the other rooms. Once this tally is noted, I am well aware that many of you wish to leave. That is your right. We will take a four- or five-minute recess when that happens so that everyone isn't like, "I can't hear, I don't know what's going on." And you can go and do that. And then we will take up with Minuteman Assessment. I encourage anyone to stay for the Minuteman Assessment who can. The consent, before the consent, the West Acton Citizen Library trustees, and then consent, and then we'll be done for tonight. So as soon as that tally... So try not to tackle one another on the way out the door. And to turn in your clickers, there'll be people holding bins, so turn those in.
I appreciate your patience, I really do. The software is what it is. Thank you. All right. You may turn the clickers off, and we will use them again later on.
Let's bring the meeting back to order, please. Thank you to those who have remained. It's, I know people have things, it's life, but here we are. So let us carry on with Article Eight. Minuteman Regional School District Assessment. Ms. Norris moves that the town raise and appropriate $3,600,903 to fund the fiscal year 2025 assessment of the Minuteman Regional School District. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Norris.
Thank you. And again, thank you to all of you who are still here right now. My name is Pam Nurse. I'm the mother of two Acton Boxcar graduates, but I'm also the Acton representative to the Minuteman School Committee. And, and it's in that role that I'm addressing you tonight. For those of you who are here who might be new to Town Meeting, I just want to give a very brief background. Minuteman High School is our career technical high school, offering high-quality, integrated vocational and academic education. And the district is made up of nine-member towns, including Acton. And we are very, very proud to be an important option for Acton students seeking hands-on, skills-based secondary education and training. I'm going to start with an overview of accomplishments of our Acton students at Minuteman, and then turn it over to Kevin Mahoney, Minuteman's interim superintendent, to talk more about our budget details. The accomplishments of Minuteman students are impressive, and that includes our Acton students. Just a very few highlights. Acton's Lyra Saucier was recognized as Minuteman's 2023 Outstanding Vocational Student. Lyra was in the Design and Visual Communications Program as an athlete, a member of the Student Council, and student representative to the School Committee. A very, very impressive young woman. Last year, seventy-three percent of Acton students at Minuteman went on to four-year colleges in their CTE. That's their Career Technical Education Field. And twenty-seven percent went directly into the workforce. Minuteman has nineteen program majors, and Acton has students in all nineteen. And our Acton students also have had a lot of athletic achievement at Minuteman, such as Jake Johnston in soccer, and Alyssa and Caitlin Collins in softball. One of the important endeavors at Minuteman this past year has been the renovation of an existing building on campus for our animal science program, which has become a very, very popular major at Minuteman. And this renovation has been important in order for us to have the appropriate space for the program. I do want to say that the renovation was being done without additional cost to our towns, and most of the upgrades were done by Minuteman students themselves. And this included bathroom repairs, a lab area floor, and plumbing and electrical upgrades. So very, very, you know, proud of and pleased with that hands-on work that our students are doing at the school and out in our member towns. Kevin is going to talk more about enrollment. Enrollment is an important driver of our assessments. I do want to say over the last few years, we've seen an increase in the number of Acton students who are choosing Minuteman. And this year is no exception. We currently have at Minuteman a total of ninety-four Acton students in grades nine through twelve. That's a twenty-nine percent increase over the last year. And despite this, a twenty-nine percent increase in the number of students attending from Acton, we are seeing only a nine-point, well, only, I shouldn't say only, a nine-point-five percent increase in the Acton assessment. And Kevin will be going in detail more about the budget and the implications for the Acton assessment. But before I do, I just want to note that the Minuteman budget is not developed in a vacuum. Throughout the process, which starts in October, we are in touch with leadership in all of our member towns. And the Minuteman School Committee and Administration have been very well aware of the budget challenges in Acton this year, and this has been a factor in our deliberations and in the development of the budget that we are presenting to you today. Before I turn it over to Kevin, I'd like to note that this past year, Kevin Mahoney, who was at Minuteman for, I believe it was seventeen years, retired, came back to lead Minuteman over the last year when we needed him. So he will be, I think, finally retiring once again for Minuteman. So Kevin has been presenting at our town meetings regularly through, over the years. This will be his last time that he will be presenting. And our new superintendent, we are so thrilled. Heidi Driscoll, currently the Associate Superintendent at Situate Public Schools. She'll be starting July first. Kevin will be very instrumental in that transition. And I do want to do a big thank you to Kevin, not only for his service to Minuteman, but for all that he's done for Acton and all of our towns. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Good evening, and thank you very much. It's my pleasure to offer some comments on the Minuteman Budget and Assessment. Be happy to answer any of those questions. Up on the screen right now, we do have our overall enrollment trend that we benchmark every October first. And as you can see from the top blue line, we currently have six hundred and eighty-six students. And that's been on a steady, relatively steady increase since 2018. When we look back at the red line and the, in the green line, you can see back in 2017, they were fairly close together, with three hundred and forty-one in district and two hundred and thirty-four non-member students. But we've seen that spread significantly over the last six years, with only thirty-seven non-resident students. When we look at our enrollment by town, we can see that Acton has ninety-four students this year, which is the second highest of our member towns. And when we look at it moving forward, we did receive twenty-two applications that were all accepted for next year's incoming class, for which seventeen students have accepted. So we expect to see eighty-seven students next year from Acton to the, to the, to our school. So we are, with that spread in that chart that you saw, we are seeing less out-of-district students, who will likely have about fourteen or sixteen next year. Those students do pay tuition, and that tuition, those tuition dollars do offset member assessments. So to the extent we see that enrollment drop off, that may have an impact on an increased trend in member assessments as we have more in-district students. Just some comments on our operating budget. Our overall budget of $31,517,219 is a 3.96% increase over FY '24. That basically is about $316,000. When we look at just the operating recommendation of about $24.1 million, it's slightly under 3%. Our capital recommendation is up $1,660,000, primarily due to a higher-than-typical contribution to our capital stabilization fund to make sure that we have funds on hands to maintain our facilities and campus that now the new building is five years old. And we really want to be mindful of making sure that we have funds available in case we need them, as well as for any type of other campus-related capital needs. Building project debt related to the new building is $5,695,000, which is 1.36% over FY '24. It's starting to stabilize now, since all of the debt service has been issued for that. So when we look at our total assessments for member towns, it's about $25,689,923. That's a slight increase year-over-year, it's a 0.82%. There were some anomalies involved with that, that I wouldn't consider this a typical year. We did pay debt service that was assessed to member towns last year related to the building of our athletic fields. We did make the commitment that we would try and use the revenue that we generate for the athletic field use to offset the debt service moving forward. Year one, we were unable to do that because the fields weren't online on time, but this fiscal year, we were able to do that. So that'll, that was a contributor to, to seeing such a low assessment increase. That'll be baked in moving forward, so we won't see such an impact on assessments moving forward. Also, again, just a reminder, as the out-of-district tuition goes down, that may have a, an impact on assessments moving forward. The assessment to Acton, $3,600,903. That is the, that is the assessment that we're seeking affirmative action from tonight, on tonight. And that's, as Pam said, that's a 9.62% increase. When we translate that into dollars, it's about $316,000 year-over-year. You can see how the trend has been. We've really seen a significant increase in Acton students. As I showed on a previous slide, we have ninety-four. I took a look back at 2016, we had thirty. So just in the span of eight years, we've seen a tripling of the enrollment. And since the enrollment is a major driver in our assessment formula, we've seen the increase in assessment moving, moving up in Acton, trending high. We did see some moderation this year. I wouldn't necessarily call 9.6 moderation, but there's been some substantial increases in the prior years. And in looking forward, I would expect the average enrollment column, which is 21.2% this year, that'll be somewhere, my guess is somewhere around ten, maybe nine percent next year, which may provide some, again, potential moderation in assessments, all other things being equal. This is just a breakdown of our required, of our preliminary assessment. Just some of the takeaway numbers on this is the minimum required contribution, which is the top number of a million six. Basically, the largest number is driven by the Chapter 70 State Aid Formula. Again, it's kind of a function of the number of students. And then the second-to-last number, the $659,823 related to debt service. Just want to point out that that debt service was excluded by Acton voters through a debt exclusion override. Some of our drivers in the budget, on the salary side, teachers, collecting- Some of our drivers in the budget, on the salary side, teachers' collective bargaining agreement was a 3.5% increase, plus Step and Lanes. We did reduce a couple of administrative positions, the Assistant Director of CTE Programming and a Human Resource position. We did bring back grant-funded positions that we used, that we had to cut during COVID because those are student-facing positions that needed support, given the growth we've had in our enrollment and in our, in our co-op programming. We did have to add a foreign language teacher that we're going to keep, and we added also an athletic trainer, given the, the high increase in after-school activities by student athletes, as well as to meet MIAA staffing regulations. On the non-salary drivers, transportation increase only goes up by Consumer Price Index. We did add an additional day so that students can stay after school and stay engaged in some of those extracurricular activities. Our utilities, based on our solar systems, starting, panel systems kicking in, we've seen a decrease in our utilities over the last couple of years, and we're reflecting that in this budget. We've been very fortunate on our health insurance. We were expecting in FY '24, a 10% increase, and as it turned out, it was a zero increase. And this year, we're budgeting for an 8% increase, but because we were able to have a zero in FY '24, we simply level funded it in '25. So, again, that's not a reflection on the assessment as well, that was one of those anomalies. And then, you know, we are investing a pretty fair amount of funding in cybersecurity as protection of our data. I mentioned earlier, an increase in our capital stabilization. We typically fund that $500,000 each year. This year, we're funding it at $850,000, just to set aside funds so that we can position ourselves to, you know, maintain our current building. We do have a adjacent building that needs some serious repair, that we'd like to look at possible programming there. I don't think that would increase our enrollment, it would just make for more space for some of our vocational programs. I mentioned earlier the debt service not being assessed, and we've also contributed $315,000 this year to our OPEB fund. That concludes my comments. We're hopeful that you'll be able to support our assessment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Select Board Recommendation?
Minuteman's been an important part of Acton and Acton's educational choices for some time. And what we've seen in recent years is that more students are understanding the advantages of a Minuteman education and are enrolling there, which is a great success. The, the other piece that I like to remind people of is that Minuteman is also key for our regional economy, that if you've ever, if you've been recently trying to hire skilled tradespeople, you can see there's a big shortage. And Minuteman is part of the strategy for getting more people involved in these fields and getting ready to provide, you know, the skills and services that we're going to need in the 21st century. The Select Board unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Of the $316,000 increase over last year, 80% of that is simply due to increased enrollment. So, the 9. whatever, 6%, about only 2% is, is due to anything other than enrollment. Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. Town Meeting Members? Are there any people wishing to speak in the large room?
Yes, Madam Moderator. At the second microphone.
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I'll be supporting-
Just speaking to the microphone.
I'll be supporting this article, but I was, again, very disappointed that the things that are controlled by Minuteman, which is the capacity of the school and the per pupil cost, were not the subjects of the presentation. If we're to judge how well you are fiscal stewards, we need to understand what's going on in terms of your expenditure per student. And the fascination with the Acton enrollment, which is not a number controlled by the Minuteman District, doesn't help this group understand how well you are managing our finances. I hope that next year's presentation, both will be more fulsome in the warrant and focused on your efforts to reduce per pupil spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another speaker in the gym?
Yes, there is. Go ahead.
Madeline Cruz, Sashimway. I just want to say that I support this article, and I hope it passes. My daughter is a senior at Minuteman Tech this year. In the last four years that she has been there, we've had some challenges, but overall, it has been a great experience, and I'm very grateful. And I hope that everybody here continues to support Minuteman, because it's an important part for children in our community. And I wish more towns, cities, nationwide would support vocational schools. So, please vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers in the small gym?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we have one speaker at the mic.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I am a big supporter of technical schools, but I don't actually understand anymore how Minuteman qualifies as such, because 70% of the graduates end up going to college. I have no issue supporting kids who want to go into trade, who want to start working after high school. But to me, this seems a bit of an easier path rather than the Acton-Boxborough High School. And so, if the numbers are correct, this is 3.6 million spent on 94 students. That's about $38,000 per kid versus Acton High School, that's, what, about $16,000? So, we're paying almost two and a half times for kids who end up going to college. And so, I just don't think that that's really a good option for taxpayers. I would have no issue if 80% of those kids went into trade or started working or apprenticing after Minuteman. But, you know, to pay this much, if you think about 70% graduating and going to college, that means out of 94 kids from Acton, about 60, right, are going to college. The difference is more than $20,000 per kid, if they actually went to the AB High School. So, that's already, I think, more than 1.2 million a year, just for almost paying like a private school, because AB is a pressure cooker, as people like it, so it gives an alternative. But I don't think that's something that we should pay if Minuteman is, is mostly just sending kids to college. And in a comment that somebody said, "I'm not even sure how it's helping to actually increase the number of tradespeople or anybody else," because that's a very small number of kids who actually end up starting to work after Minuteman. Thank you.
Thank you. Back here to the auditorium. Speaker at microphone three.
Yes, oh, okay. We have one here.
In a minute, Bill.
This is Terrigan. I want to support what Madeline said. And also, while I recognize the cost per student is high, the cost per student's higher if you're, instead of going to Minuteman, you enter a special needs program. So, I feel like we've done a really good job with Minuteman, and I support this budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Back to the gym for the speaker there, Mr. Mon.
Speaker at the back microphone, go ahead.
Hi, Kelly Cluit, High Street. Kelly Cluit on High Street. I have a son who graduated and is working full-time as an auto mechanic. My daughter is a junior in the Health Assisting Program, and she will go on to college because she needs to get a college degree to complete her nursing. So, that could be why some of the students do continue on to college. That's just a point I want people to understand as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Back here to the auditorium. Speaker at microphone one.
Hi. I think the speaker before me said a lot of what I was going to say, is that these days, kids who, who, who major in many of the programs at, at Minuteman College actually will go on often to junior college, often to community college. They need to get further certification in the fields that they're interested in studying in. They're not necessarily going off to Cornell, they might be, but, you know, they're, they're going to pursue more studies in these fields. And these days, a high school degree, no matter how good at a regional high school, isn't necessarily going to get you a job, you need that further study. So, I'm so grateful and happy that this program is here for the students.
Thank you. Speaker at microphone two.
Angela Morrison, Brucewood Road. I am going to further support what the two women before me just said. A lot of people might be going to vocational school and want to open their own business, so going to get an MBA degree just to start their own business after they get the skilled, learn the skilled services at Minuteman, that's a good thing. So, I don't see why it's a bad thing that kids are going to college after they go to Minuteman. I see that as a positive thing.
Thank you. Are there any people who, I see nobody else in the auditorium?
We have one here.
One, one person? Okay, let's hear from them.
Go ahead.
Hi, Celestratakis, Main Street. I just wanted to say to people that these seats are reserved for our students who want to go into the trade. So, if we do leave the system and not support this, those students have nowhere to go. So, it's something to think about, because we don't have those services at our high school.
Thank you. And that's the last standing here.
Thank you. Anybody else in the small gym?
Madam Moderator, thank you.
Okay, I, this is a majority vote. I think we have a manageable amount. We'll try doing it by voice, voice vote. So, take your votes separately in the other rooms, and I will ask for the vote here. All who are in, whoops, let me just make sure that we're clear on what we're voting. Minuteman Regional School District Assessment does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Small number. What is the vote in-
A small, small number of noes here, but overwhelmingly in favor.
Thank you. In the small gym?
The same situation, a small number of noes.
I declare that the assessment does pass by, clearly by the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next, let's move to West Acton Citizens Library Trustees. If the two candidates could come forward, please. And there's one.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
We have one of the candidates for West Acton Trustee in the upper gym.
Oh, perfect, okay. I'm just going to wait a minute, because quite a few people are leaving here. And then, if we could hear first from the candidate in the gym for up to two minutes, and then we'll hear from the candidate in here, and then we'll do a clicker vote. At least all the cars will be out of the parking lot by the time we get ready. Okay, is it quiet enough in the gyms for the candidates to be heard?
Yes, we're ready. You're also-
Okay, two minutes, and please introduce yourself and tell us.
Yes, my name is Linda Viera of Great Elm Way, and a passionate lover of libraries. I am running to raise the visibility of the West Acton Citizens Library to increase circulation and use of the library by people of all ages and demographics. To start with, we need more publicity and outreach to let people know about this unique library. Having more programs and events at Citizens Library would certainly draw more people in. There are lots of wonderful programs and events at the Acton Memorial Library. I'd like to see some of these programs offered at the Citizens Library, perhaps on a smaller scale, because it is a smaller library, but nevertheless as important. Citizens Library is fortunate to have its own gift fund. This fund could be used in a fiscally responsible way to make the library more inviting and comfortable, perhaps a home away from home. Ideas include an updated technology center, colorful signs and artwork, cozy furniture for children and adults, and improved shelving to hold more books and materials. Most importantly, we need to begin the process of making Citizens Library handicapped accessible so that this library can truly serve everyone. The role of the West Acton Citizens Library has been controversial in recent years. The newly-formed Citizens Library Governance Advisory Committee will be looking at the issues and making a recommendation about the role of the Citizens Trustees. If elected, I would work collaboratively with this committee to resolve these issues and make a recommendation in a timely manner so that all trustees and library staff can focus on what they do best, serve the people of Acton and Massachusetts. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Come ahead.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for your endurance and persistence in still being here. This is one of the all-time latest, so I appreciate your not only being here, but staying for the vote. I'm Annette Lockery, Windsor Avenue. I'm currently a trustee at Citizens Library. I'm asking for your vote so I can continue in my role as a trustee. The Citizens Library Trustees have worked together successfully over the past year on behalf of Citizens Library, in coordination and in concert with Memorial Library, and on behalf of all Acton taxpayers. Living only a few doors away, I have been committed to the warm and friendly Citizens Library since moving here many years ago. My involvement has included numerous activities in support of Citizens Library, such as children's programming, plant sales, fundraising, Mother's Day fairs, book sales, plant sales, publicity, the auxiliary to raise money, and library patron outreach, not to mention that many times I've shoveled the front walk. My continued personal dedication is to the unique contribution that Citizens Library represents to the very fiber of the town of Acton that we all love, hold dear, and want to maintain. It is why many of us moved to and have chosen to remain in the charming town of Acton. Be assured that I can be counted on and trusted to do the right thing on behalf of Acton's first and oldest, very, very special historic library. Please consider my decades-long commitment to Citizens Library in casting your vote for this trustee position. Thank you again for listening and for staying so late.
Okay, we will do a clicker vote. There are two candidates, so same, same process. Press the orange button, and then press the blue button. Do we have one with people's names on it? Did we have a slide? If we don't, that is fine. We do. Perfect. Okay. So, please vote by selecting, if you are voting for Annette Lockery, who you heard from second, please press A. If you choose Linda Viera, who you heard first, please press E. The vote is open. The vote is open. Has everybody in this room voted?
Everybody has voted in the upper gym.
And the small gym?
We're all sitting here, thank you.
Okay, the voting is now closed. So while we're waiting, I'll just like to point out, over in this side, section small that has not diminished in the amount of time we've been here are the folks who work for us. These are our town staff, ready for any sort of situation we might have in here or elsewhere. So, yes, thank you for sticking it out, since you're probably all getting up and going to work tomorrow and coming back here tomorrow night. And I'll thank the candidates for running a fair campaign, a brief, and a brief campaign, which many candidates could take a hint from. I hope that we'll have enough people to feel like it's, you know, reasonable effort. The vote is 203 for Linda Viera and 159 for Annette Lockery. Thank you to both of you for putting yourselves forth and serving our community. Final item of business for tonight is the consent calendar, or the consent agenda, which is a group of articles selected because they are, we have them every year, usually non-controversial. As I, I'll make the motion, read down the list, which is in the table of contents in the warrant marked by asterisks, those articles. I'll read out the number and title. If two or more people feel the need, that they have a question or need to discuss anything about the article, yell out "hold," and we'll return to that separately, but otherwise we'll vote the block as a unit. Mr. Snyder Grant moves that the town take up 20 articles in the consent calendar of the warrant, Articles 2 and 17 through 35 inclusive. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will read down the list. If there are any that need to be held out, just call it out. Article 17, authorize collective bargaining agreement, highway municipal properties and cemetery. Article 18, authorize collective bargaining agreement, public safety dispatch. Article 19, amend town charter, historic district commission. Article 20, accept land gift, portion of 38 Piper Road. Article 21, accept legislation, prudent investor rule. I heard one?
Second.
Okay. That's number 21. Article 22, amend general bylaws, establish new revolving funds. Article 23, revolving fund budgets. Article 24, commuter lot and station maintenance. Article 25, septic disposal enterprise budget. Article 26, transfer station and recycling enterprise budget. Article 27, sewer enterprise budget. Article 28, ambulance enterprise budget. Article 29, transportation enterprise budget. Article 30, authorized easements. Article 31, highway reimbursement program, Chapter 90. Article 32, insurance proceeds. Article 33, federal and state reimbursement aid. Article 34, performance bonds. Article 35, sale of foreclosed properties. And Article 2, receive and accept reports. Okay, we have held out one article, number 21. At this time, we'll vote the remaining articles. Does require a two-thirds, but let's make the attempt on a voice vote first. All who are in favor of the non-held articles on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any who are opposed, please say nay. It is unanimous in here.
It's unanimous in the upper gym.
Unanimous in the lower gym.
Thank you. So, I see a person proceeding to the microphone. Yes, go ahead.
I thought we already did this. Prudent investment rules. I thought we already had them.
Is there a question? Mr. Martin, go ahead.
So, maybe we had them someplace else, but we didn't have them here. This article asks that we apply the prudent investor rule to a few trusts in town. So currently, the investments that we can make are very restricted. I think there's like 20 or 21 specific ways, there are specific funds that we can invest in. This allows us to invest in different ways to get a better return, but the stipulation being that the, we must be a prudent investor, and the law says that we must exercise reasonable care, skill, and caution when making these investments. So I'm happy to answer another question. The Select Board voted unanimously to recommend this article.
I have just been informed that the legislation regarding these particular, this particular item has only been enacted since July 2023. So we are acting on it, it would seem, at the first opportunity. So, seeing no other, are there any other questions or comments in the other rooms?
There is nobody standing in the upper gym.
No one in the lower gym is standing.
All right. Then we will vote on this item. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Unanimous here?
Unanimous in the upper gym.
Unanimous in the lower gym.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion, Mr. Snyder Grant.
I move that we adjourn until tomorrow.
At which time? At 7:00 PM, this time?
At 7:00 PM, yes.
This place. Thank you so much.
Aye.
Aye.